June 26, 2023. It's now 6:30. I'll call it the order. We do have a quorum. I'll get Jennifer to do the invocation, please.
Thank you. Dear Father, thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today in attendance of the Mid Hill Planning Board meeting. We ask that you work mightily in us today as we begin this meeting, come upon us and cause us to have a productive meeting and allow us to make the best decisions for our community. Please fill us with your grace as we make these decisions that might affect the residents of Mid Hill and lead each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions at this time. Enable us to think and strategize in ways that will achieve great results for the service of Mid Hill. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good job.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the May 15 meeting? So moved is second?
Second.
Second by Eric. Any discussion on it? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes. Minutes are approved. Any additions or deletions to agenda items? Anybody? Okay. Reports? John, anything? No old business? We'll get right into new business. Discussion and recommendation ZZ 23-5 filed by Griffin Land Holding LLC to request site plan approval for property located at 13315 Yomack Drive, tax parcel number 13909217. How you want to proceed, John?
It's okay. I'm going to ask the applicants to come up. I'm not sure which one. Can I have all your?
Awesome. Thanks, John.
I'm going to pull up you and then you can run it from there, okay?
Okay. I'm Greg Hartley with Acro Development Services, 601 South Cedar Street, Suite 101, Evening. Chase Walker of Benoy Construction, general contractor for Griffin.
Did you say Chase?
Yes.
Chase.
Yes, sir.
All right.
We submitted today some updated elevations and then also some representative pictures of other projects and then also materials for the building, the exterior. As far as the site goes, it's pretty self-explanatory. The site has, do we have?
It's not coming up on here, John.
Yeah, I don't have the site. I didn't send you the new site or site plan today. Do you have the old one? I can just walk you through the site plan from memory, but what we did is there are no entrances off of Blair Road. There are two entrances that circulate around the building. This project is a rebar manufacturing bending facility. It has an office component in the front, two-story that has office space for that use as well as other uses that the owners have. Blue dot. Not sure, Scott, if you want to talk about that, but you're more than welcome to. Then it has a component in the back that is, has drive-through areas for customers for drop-off material and then also for customers to come in with trailers and pick up finished material. Circulation around the building, yeah, there we go. Mainly is coming in from the, like, if you're looking at the site, the right side of the drive comes in. Here, I'll just, here. Circulation goes around the building and comes back out. Parking here and then along the side of the building for employees. The rear of the building is roughly about 40 feet in height, roughly 36, something like that. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Specifically, we try to keep the drives as far away from Blair Road as possible to allow stacking. And then it'll also allows for some future expansion of parking and/or another building close to Blair Road. That access would still be off of Jomack. It would not be off Blair Road. There's a lot of area in the back for storage, obviously rebar. There's a lot of area that's needed for maneuvering, swinging that around, equipment moving, so on. So it's quite a big, a large area for that in the back. Any questions about the site?
Are you going to talk about the materials as some?
We are.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, can you pull that up?
So the majority of the building will be comprised of glass storefront, split-face masonry, and metal panels. The last meeting, I think there were some questions about the metal panel product. Right now, we're looking at an architectural insulated metal panel, so it's not, I don't know if anybody has a thought of like a metal shed. It's not that. It's more so to break up the face of the building. You know, there's a lot of masonry. We've got a tall building, so trying to break it up between the masonry and the glass on these tall walls. So if you look here, this is your front-facing part of the building. So all of this would be split-faced brick. And then over here, up to the top of these garage doors, right now we have that at, I believe, 18 feet tall, and that would all be brick all the way up to there. And then we have the insulated wall panels up on the very top. So this is actually a sample of that product that comes in multiple colors, and it would go up tall. I actually have some pictures of other projects that we've done and a few that aren't ours to show you as well if we'd like to look at those. John, how do I get back to that file folder?
Try and hit the switch on and see if that takes you.
Here. Let me just pull this out. There we go. So we actually do quite a bit of work with Liberty University. This is their new student tennis center and athletic center. So it's kind of the same principle that we're looking at for Mr. Griffin. Vast majority of it would be masonry, and then you have some more architectural elements at the top of the building to try to break up that mass, and that's what that would be there. Let's see if I can go to the next one. So it doesn't look like, you know, a metal building. But I think that maybe there was some question if it was going to be a metal building. That's not necessarily the case. So this is kind of the model that we're using similar products. That's just the back of the building there. This is actually a Mid Hill building. We did not build this, but the metal panel supplier that we're working with did use the same product and provided me the sample. So very similar brick on the mass and then up towards the top using the insulated metal panels. So this is the renderings that we've currently put together. You know, it's still early in the project and we still have to figure out, you know, where and cost and, you know, a lot of different things to work through, but this is the general idea of how that would look in a rendering. So all of this black charcoal would be split-faced brick. All of this would be masonry here. So up towards the top is where that metal panel would go, and we'd have clear-story glass as well there. So this back area is, as Greg mentioned, the rebar bending facility, which is about 57,000 square feet. And then you have the office element here on the front, which is two-story, each footprint, each floor would be roughly 7,000 square feet. So you have a lot of different masonry products on this part as well as around the building. Should be able to. Yeah, should be able to. Again, all masonry here, products. We do have some metal fins that are just kind of an architectural, you know, something to add some pop to the building. And then again, here's.
I'm sorry, say it again. What were those?
These are just architectural metal fins. So they would, they would not be a part of the building envelope necessarily. They would stick out and just be purely for architecture.
And where the blue bar is, that's groundface block or what is it?
This part right here.
Yeah, this whole wall right here.
Yes, that would be a split-face masonry product. Once we get a little bit farther down, we've talked about a couple of different options there of concrete finish or masonry. So either way, it'd be a masonry-type product. I don't know if that's a. And then let's go to the last one here. Again, this would, this little canopy would be all architectural metal as well. There you go. That's a good look at these architectural metal fins. These are typically anywhere from 10 to 12 inches perpendicular to the face of the building, and it would have kind of a hanger that would just support these and purely architectural. So that's about it that we've developed so far for renderings. We were told that there was a list of approved building products. Have not been able to locate that. I'm not sure if that's something that we could get at one, some point, and we can cross-reference each of our building materials with that if there's any objections with the products being used on the building.
Is that it?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
All right. John, just real quick on this metal thing. What was the issue, or maybe the board remembers? What was the issue with that panel we had before?
Yes, there was a comment at the public hearing from Commissioner Dalton, maybe. And he did ask about materials, and I think, looking back at that, he may have been confusing Clear Creek, which did have a different set of conditions for the materials. It was much more specific on the type of materials. And if you remember, they even came back and revised the materials.
Right.
And also, if you remember, several months later, someone came in and tried to get a new material approved. And I think that was the comment from the commissioner was to make sure those materials match. However, this is in the Mid Hill Business Park, and the material requirement is different, the condition. The original condition from, you know, 1999 when this park was originally approved. And really, the only thing I found there is it says, actually, it says no tilt walls. And it says that the front facade should be brick. And that's it. And it just says the front cannot be metal. And when it says front, it means the portion that faces the interior streets, not Blair. But in this case, it would be, I guess that's Jomack. So that needs to be brick. And, I mean, just looking at this rendering here, I would say that the front, I think this is the south elevation.
That would be facing Jomack.
Facing Jomack, yeah. So to me, this appears, that would be the bulk of it, the front piece. That would be the front facade, and it appears to me to be brick. So I think it meets the spirit of that condition. Now, when we get back to, between now and the next commissioners' meeting, we'll go through these materials, and if they want to add or change it, then they can do that. But I think that's where that comment came from. I think it was thinking of the Clear Creek Business Park.
Yeah, I just remember we had an issue with a panel.
That's right.
Yeah.
Well, the issue is being on the front, correct?
Yeah.
Even in Clear Creek, it was?
In Clear Creek was a little different, where in this Mid Hill Business Park, it was just really specific to the front facade. In Clear Creek, it was really every exposed elevation had to be brick or masonry. And then they added some other materials along the line down, you know, years later, they added some materials. And then that group came in and wanted a certain type of new panel to be added to the list, and the commissioners denied that request. So I think that's where Commissioner Dalton, I believe it was Dalton, I think that's what he was saying, let's make sure we're not, you know, telling them they can't do it, but allowing these guys to do it.
Yeah.
So anyway, that's a conversation I need to follow up with the town manager and the commissioners on.
All right, let's go down. Eric?
Yeah, actually, I do have a question regarding the site layout. It looks like there's a big unused area on the western side of the lot. Is that for future growth, or is that going to be for storage?
It is for future growth, a potential. We have some layouts where we looked at parking and another building there, depending on the uses that are needed in the future.
So for now, it looks like the storage then is going to be directly behind the facility?
That is correct. And I think by ordinance, we have to screen the storage anyway, so by landscaping and/or fencing, we would do that.
Okay, so there are plans for landscaping and fencing?
Absolutely.
That was, that was my primary question.
Kenny?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that Eric had asked my question, but I notice you've got street trees shown on Jomack and then only on a portion of Blair, it appears.
I believe there were some existing trees there we were utilizing along Blair. The intent is to have it all along the property boundary as required.
Okay. So is that a sewer line that I'm seeing just outside the right-of-way on your property?
I don't know. I'm going to have to wait and look at the plan. It's been a while since I've seen this one. Sorry. Yeah. If we. What are you talking about again? Are you talking?
This is page two, on the second page.
Sorry.
Yeah, up against Blair, and I'm.
Yeah, there's a, there, there is a sanitary that runs along there, so our sanitary lateral comes out of the front of the building and then goes over and ties into that location.
Okay. So what kind of buffer are you going to put up against Blair Road?
It'll, what's required, I mean, it depends on the screening and where we put that screening, but we would have the street trees as required. I mean, we'll meet the ordinance requirements.
Okay, because that was my concern, is Charlotte Water's not going to let you put trees in a sanitary sewer easement.
That's correct, yeah. We typically work and put that right along the edge, and they have let us put it at the edge of the easement.
So back on your side, away from the right-of-way?
That's correct.
Okay. Other than that, I guess you're going to have a, that's really a technical thing with Charlotte Water, the two-inch line, looks like you're servicing everything with.
Yep.
And if it was going to be sprinkled?
Correct. Yep.
Is it going to be sprinkled?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, the rest, yeah, the stuff I would ask would be part of the technical review, so that's all I have.
Yeah, first, John, I noticed on the, on the report, your department's favorable, but are y'all good with, are all the Ts across? All the Is are dotted? I mean, even on this metal portion of the front?
That's the only outstanding issue is that we do need to follow up with the commissioners on the materials if they want to see something different, or maybe it is what I was referring to, that maybe there was just confusion about the Clear Creek material requirements. But that, that's the only, the only issue.
Okay, well, I think it's a, number one, I think it's a great-looking project, and I think it would be an added benefit to the Mid Hill community. But now, are there contingency plans here as far as if there is a material issue with the metal pieces?
Well, I, yeah, certainly there's, there would have to be some sort of.
Could you state your name and address?
I'm Scott Griffin, 12809 Bain School Road. You know, what we did is that when we hired LS3P, who we were very fortunate to get as an architect, they norm, you know, they're, they're, we consider them the best in the, in the state for sure. We felt fortunate to be able to get LS3P to design the structure for us. They know when we were masonry contractors, and the intent of the design was to, was to, was to break up and have this metal panel as part of that design. And that's what we, that's what we charged them with, was the opportunity to, we didn't talk budget numbers, we didn't talk anything. We just said we wanted a fabulous building that we would all be proud of, and it would be proud to grow with and part of what we do. So that's the design that they came up with, and without having to, we, we were very comfortable with their design and with the intent that they came out with. So we would certainly have to come up with something, I'm assuming, but we would hope that that wouldn't be the case as far as we've come down the road with LS3P. And Jeff Floyd, who was a managing partner, was a, was very much involved in this, and so we feel great about the project that he's put before you, so hopefully, hopefully. And it isn't a cost issue. These panels aren't, these panels aren't any less expensive than masonry. It was more the design and the intent of the design, and a 37-foot-tall building is very tall. It doesn't look that in that picture, but 37 feet tall is a, is a tall building, and I think from a, just from a viability standpoint, he was trying to, he was trying to play that into the design. So that's our hope.
Right. Well, the reason, Mr. Griffin, the reason I ask what I did is, you know, I mean, I think it's a beautiful project, okay, and I'm inclined to be in favor of, but there is a material issue.
Sure.
Okay, with, with what the, with what the standards are until that is, you know, so, and, you know, the way I'm looking at it is if I'm going to make a recommendation in favor of, you know, then there's got to be a contingency on the material for the front, because the only issue is the front, right? The front facade of the building, front-facing to the road.
No, no, no. I mean, I think from, from what I see here with the rendering and what I read in the conditions for, and I brought a copy from 1999, I think they meet it, because it says the front facade shall be brick, and you can't, and it says you cannot have a metal front facade. This is not, the front facade in this rendering shows brick or masonry.
Okay.
So I think it meets that condition. Now, if the commissioners decide to, for whatever reason, to exclude a certain, that, that would be.
Conditional use.
That would be beyond what the original condition was.
Okay.
But this all might be a moot point, because if you remember, when they, and I wish I remembered the name of that material, but when they were sharing that material with us, the previous architect for Clear Creek, it was a, I can't remember the name of it, but it was like a metal, but it had a foam.
So does this. So does this.
Oh, okay. Well, okay, well, that's, now, that's the one at Clear Creek that they said they did not want. And that is, the architect came in and tried to persuade the board, and the board said we don't. But again, that was very particular to Clear Creek, because Clear Creek had basically all masonry building.
And the, and the only reason I bring this up is I just don't, I just want to make sure the board meets our charge.
Yeah.
And when we pass something up, that we're not creating a problem, but, you know, trying to work to support the commissioners and, you know, whichever way, I don't want to cause an issue. But in the same token, don't want to cause an issue for the applicant either, because I think that's a great, I think it's a great facility to have in Mid Hill. So, so, you know, this is, in my opinion, the kind of business that we, businesses that we need in Mid Hill to expand. And so I just wanted to kind of get an idea. I just want to make sure, we're not talking deal breaker here, because, you know, you know, on, from your standpoint, if the material, because I understand this stuff's expensive, but I also understand there was an issue in Clear Creek, so.
And I think we're talking about two different products, because that is the product that they wound up using at Clear Creek. That wasn't the product that was denied.
Okay.
That's the product that's on that.
That is the product that was used?
That's the product, yes.
Okay.
Yes. I think we're talking about two.
I just don't want to push something forward.
Sure.
That's going to be a problem when it gets to the next step.
That's right.
Okay? So, thank you, that's all, you know, like I said, I think it's a very strong-looking project, so, thank you.
Anything else, Ron? Good. Jennifer?
They answered all my questions.
Yeah. Let's just talk about this storage area right here, and it might be more of a question for John. We had to go through some, something when we opened the Jones property to let them store things out there on the road. So if this becomes a storage area off here, I guess that would be what, is that the west side where that's proposed storage areas?
Yeah, that.
Yeah, next to the road. John, if that becomes a storage area, is that going to be an issue? I mean, is there, is there something that keeps us from allowing storage there? Because they had to come for variance on the other one.
All right, so.
For the trailers.
Yeah. Well, so what happened with that one is, to go back to the original approval, the plan was originally to build a building there.
Yeah.
And they never got to it. And they came in and explained the financial issues, what led them to the fact that they just never were going to build that building. So really, what they did when they came in was to basically say, allow us just to do truck parking for now, maybe forever, but because we're not doing a building now. So that, that was really the, the main point of that, that application was they were switching out what was a building to truck parking.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then, of course, there was an agreement about the screening, the burn, the landscaping that they were, you know, ended up doing. So the same thing here, if, and there, I mean, they're already doing it, but if we felt like they, we should increase the screening or whatnot, that, that's, you know, absolutely within the realm of this conditional zone.
To the best of your knowledge, what do you think's going to be there?
Well, just, just to clarify, the area that's basically where that hatching goes straight south, west of that is undeveloped. That's grass.
Right.
It's not going to be used for storage. In the future, the intent is to have another building there and parking, which we then know we would have to come back in and go through the process again to add that. Just, there's no firm plan for that whatsoever.
So the storage is, right now, is planned for the gravel area?
The gravel and the concrete area that's in the, kind of north of the building, between that and the railroad tracks. That's correct. And I say it's storage, but really, it's inventory storage. It's bringing it in, dropping it off, taking it inside, bending it, getting it shipped out. So it's a constant revolving inventory.
Okay. All right.
And just, if they, you know, let's say a few years from now, they do want to expand that storage, they're, they're coming back.
Got to come back.
They're cycling back through this process.
Yeah. So, you know, several times, I guess it was Chase said, you know, this is conceptual, what we know now. I mean, how firm are you that this is what you want the building to look like? I mean, I get nervous with conceptual.
I think we're firm, except unless you want to answer. We're firm, except for the fact that we just want to make sure the materials are.
Right. Is that your only issue, materials?
Correct, yes.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Because we're trying to, one of the things that happens here is we're trying to get to where we know what we're passing on to the commissioners. And we had this discussion on another project before where they came in and, you know, it may or may not be what's going to the commissioners. Well, what are we making a recommendation on? That's what we need to pass on to the commissioners, so we know what's there. So we'd like to have as close to a final design, we'd like to have a final design, but we'd like to have as close to a final design as we can get when, when it's brought in here.
In full transparency, I think the only thing that we've even talked about considering removing or changing off the face of the building are those architectural fins, because they, it's purely architectural.
Right.
So those are the only items that we've, we've discussed removing from the job.
All right, okay, good, thank you. Anybody else got anything? Any other issues, any other questions? If not, go ahead, Kenny.
If I could, can we limit the use of that area for storage? I mean, your, your future expansion, that's fine, they'll have to come back in front of us, but can we?
You talking about the area I just talked about? I think they said it's just grass. You aren't going to use that for storage, are you?
No, we are not. That area, basically, if you're looking at the site, kind of the western third of it, it just remains grass. It's sloped area. That's all it'll be.
Yeah.
It's not going to be used for inventory or storage.
All right, so there won't be any storage there, won't be anything out there?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Can I get a, a motion?
Well, Mr. Chairman, in regards to ZZ 23-5, my opinion is found to be consistent with the land use plan. The land use plan indicates light industrial, light industrial areas are intended to support a mix of innovation businesses, innovative businesses, and they can benefit from the coalition of related complementary industries. The mix use ranges from light industrial operations and maker spaces to support office, retail, and services. Therefore, ZZ 23-5 is found to be reasonable, in my opinion, in, in the public interest based on the information presented and previewed in this petition. So therefore, I would make a recommendation to a favorable recommendation on to the board on ZZ 23-5.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Kenny, seconds. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Okay. Second item tonight, discussion and recommendation on ZZ 23-7 filed by the town of Mid Hill to request a site plan approval for Mid Hill Public Services Facility for the property to request a site plan approval for Min Hill Public Services Facility for the property located at 6793 Lebanon Road, tax parcel number 135191-22.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name is Steve Frye. Uh, work with the town of Min Hill. Uh, address is 4430 Min Hill Village Lane, Min Hill, North Carolina.
Aye.
Um, I'll give you a brief overview, because I understand a few of you are really not familiar with this project. Probably three years ago, uh, the board authorized the town manager to purchase the overall site, the entire site that you see there, including the two houses and the empty lot up front. Um, and true, Brian Welch, man, he got it for a steal. Um, furthered that steal of a deal by subdividing out the residential houses out front and selling those off, with the understanding that was actually written in their sales contract that the town reserves the right to develop this property, however it sees fit, including a fire station in the future.
Can you speak on the viability?
Yeah.
Because we live on Mark K Street, so you're interested in what's happening.
Okay. And if, if you don't hear anything from me, I'll stick around and make sure I can talk to y'all afterwards. Um, the plan from the get-go was to, uh, develop this site into a fire station, a police property and evidence building, and a public works facility. The Board of Commissioners has, um, been involved along all these steps, from, uh, selecting a, a design-build contractor, which is Edifist, the same folks that built this building, um, and the architect that also designed the building. They've been involved at key milestone dates to, to check our math, to make sure the building components and the layout and everything, um, aligns with what they want to see for vision of growth. Um, the site is considered an essential service, um, in the town, the UDO, um, which requires a rezoning for this. So the existing zoning is residential district. We're asking to go to a residential CZD. Um, what else? So the, the components of the site include a fire station up front, uh, which is approximately 9,600 square feet. Um, I believe it is, uh, six rooms plus a captain's room. Um, I don't have that one. The public works facility is my baby. I have that one envisioned, blazing in my mind. Uh, but the fire station, we've been working in close concert with the fire chiefs, um, to get their input on that. It's a two-bay drive-through garage, which is technically room for four apparatus in the future. Uh, it also features a fuel depot that you'll see immediately to the south of the fire station. I'm working from Lebanon Road into the site. That's a fuel depot that'll supply gasoline and diesel for all town vehicles. It'll be gated from that point back, um, so you'll have to have a badge or something to get through that gate back to the fuel depot. Uh, immediately behind the fire station to the west is the police evidence building, and that is intended to basically replace what the police currently live out of, a few hundred square feet over in the old town hall and the police station. Um, this is, um, predominantly, like it says, evidence storage, but they can also do, uh, they'll have a small garage bay that they can do upfitting of police cars out of the weather, out of the sun. Um, they can also, there'll be a Sallyport to transfer, um, suspects, or whatever you're supposed to call them, uh, people they've arrested from the vehicle into a holding bay. Um, but like I said, predominantly evidence storage. So it's, um, I think there's one or two staff people that'll be in there. It is not a police station. They're not running calls out of there. There's not even a training room that was originally presented in there. So it's a very low-use, one or two staff, you know, a day. Um, and then moving further around and heading back down south is the police, or, excuse me, the public works facility. Um, this is, or, excuse me, the police department is approximately 6,800 square feet. Public Works is 2,500 square feet of heated and 6,000 of bays, so about 8,500 square feet total. Um, it features some administrative office space. Um, for those of you that aren't, that have never been to the shop, it's located down behind us here in the woods, behind the police station. Um, it's been the, it's been the shop for, since 1983. We've grossly outgrown it. Um, we literally cannot add any more warm bodies down there. So it features what we call the clubhouse. It's a large room for eating lunch, um, starting and ending the day, doing training sessions, but also some private office space that we, we grossly lack now. Um, uh, some cleaning areas, tool storage, that nature. It's a three-bay, drive-through garages there to do vehicle maintenance, um, work on small projects, things of that nature. Uh, the building you don't see, it's, it's outlined in a rectangle, though, in that gravel lot immediately to the north of the public works building. That's a pole barn facility, which is basically a large, um, I co, I compare it to a, a horse arena, if you've ever been over to the, um, uh, the property next to Will Grove Park. He's got a nice horse, uh, barn over there. But that gets our vehicles out of the weather. Stops the rubber hoses from being rotted in the sunlight. Um, and then moving immediately west of that is an area called the fire training facility. That's, uh, one that got added on late in the game here. We're working in partnership with the former volunteer fire department board and the town. Uh, they are, um, donating a fire training facility, which is essentially a bunch of cargo boxes that get cleverly bolted together and stacked, uh, in a way that they can simulate fire and smoke training. Um, as I understand it, it'll be the, outside of Charlotte Fire, it'll be the only one in the county, um, after we built this. So it's, um, it's got a, it shows a gravel connection out to the back to Cheryl Circle that will likely, if ever, it'll likely only be used for access for that trial, uh, excuse me, that fire training, or possibly even to maybe drag some hose lines back there from a nearby hydrant. Um, that is not a primary access. The primary access is in and out next to the fire station there, onto Lebanon Road. Speaking of Lebanon, you see the road improvements that are shown there. We're, uh, we've been working with DOT, um, to get their opinion on what would be needed. We've done that since day one. Uh, so a left-hand turn lane into the site is proposed there. Um, and obviously, the, the connection from the bays, the garage from the fire station out to Lebanon Road. Other than that, that's, that's it in a nutshell. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Incinerator in there?
There is an incinerator, yep. That is located just west of the police evidence building. Um, that's a device that we currently already own and operate over behind the existing police, uh, building. Um, it's natural gas-powered. Um, it's a very efficient burner. It's got three, what we call afterburners inside the thing. I forget how many BTUs it is. It's very hot, very powerful. So don't picture a campfire or a bonfire. It does not smoke like that, as long as it's being used correctly.
Start with you, Jennifer.
Where did you say the fuel tanks were going to be?
So if you see Lebanon Road over there on the very right-hand side, come in, pass the parking lots, you'll go through a gate, and immediately that bulge out to the left.
Okay.
Picture a, a mini fuel station. It's, it'll have a covered canopy, above-ground tank, because permitting an underground tank is worse than dealing with the railroad. Um, it'll be screened by the, uh, whatever's required by the code landscaping-wise.
Can you take us into the materials?
Yeah. So there's, excuse, that was an important part. I know y'all are interested in that. Uh, it's proposed to be brick, um, similar to the brick that's on this building. Um, the colors might be a little bit off here with projection and everything, but that's supposed, that's intended to match this building here. It's got a split face, um, small decorative feature along the bottom there.
Is it brick all the way around?
Yeah, brick all the way around, cycled.
All right. I'm sorry, Jennifer, go ahead.
That was my main question, which is.
So that, that was.
I understood where that was.
That's the fire station. There's public works. Can't even tell the difference if I didn't tell you, really, other than the additional bay. And then there's the police evidence building. We went through a few iterations. We looked at, um, hardy board, and believe it or not, the brick was really not much more expensive than the hardy, so the board said, go with the brick.
Um, this is my first time seeing this. What, give me, um, what type of timeline?
So we, um, yeah, so we opened bids last week. We have another bid opening tomorrow. Um, like I said, it's a design-build project, which is traditionally used to accelerate a project. That's not what we're trying to do. We're not trying to rocket ship this thing. Um, it was for ease of contract management and working with contractors and, and designers that we have a comfortable relationship with. Tentatively, I think construction is supposed to start, uh, early fall this year, and we hope to, to turn lights on in October, November of next.
And are you talking about doing turnkey? Everything that you're showing us here is, is part of the bid process? I mean, all the buildings?
Everything except furniture.
Okay.
Yeah.
So doing it all at once?
Yep. Yes, that's, yeah, it's a good question. All, there's no phasing. There's phase zero. It's the entire project. We're not going to piecemeal it.
No, I think that's the only question I have right now. Ken?
Jennifer?
Mr. Chairman, I might have to recuse myself from this, since I'm the engineer of record, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Great-looking drawing by him.
Yeah, that fire facility.
Eric?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions. So, uh, the entire property here, is it going to be fenced in?
Yes.
Around the entire perimeter?
Yep. There'll be a chain-link fence all the way around the, the, uh, the perimeter.
I got it.
The area that you see in what looks like steps, um, that's a undisturbed, we're not touching those woods, we're not clearing that. Anywhere else that looks white inside of the, the property boundary, Kenny, correct me if I'm wrong, is fair game to, for us to clear and level.
Any issues?
Those, those areas are labeled undisturbed open space. So, yeah, there, but otherwise, the fence quarter, or, you know, the 10 feet or so that you need to build a fence, that'll be obviously cleared.
Uh, and then, and that, I guess, the unmarked area that's white there, I mean, is there any, uh, future ideas of expansion, future intentions?
No. Um, I mean, we played with some ideas, but right now, the answer's no. What that is, again, if you go visit our public works facility now, um, don't do that after hours, by the way. We have signs up that says, don't do that. Um, but we need areas to dump mulch, um, good dirt, um, pipe that's on its way, got pulled out of the ground, and it's on its way to the landfill. Um, other things would be maybe during a, after a hurricane or a, a ice storm, that's where we lay the trees while they're waiting to be chipped, and we get them out of the street. But no, no structures back there, other than the fire training facility.
All right. And then, uh, my final question here is going to be, it looks like the stormwater retention areas?
Uh-huh.
Um, I assume that's not going to be standing water. I mean.
Uh, the pond, number one, is intended to be a wet pond, correct, Kenny? Number two, I think, is still, um, being ironed out. But as far as standing water goes, I mean, it won't look like a mud puddle. It'll be intentionally designed to hold water in it, and it's just one of a dozen flavors of how you can treat stormwater.
That's all I got.
Okay. Is this, I guess, is this an easement that's coming in down here on the, whatever side that is, the?
Running parallel with Lebanon?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is that a future road y'all are thinking of?
No, no, that's a, that's a Duke easement for overhead transmission lines.
Okay. Okay. All right.
Again, you'd have better luck working with the railroad than getting that easement moved, so we're just having to work around it.
No. So the, the gate up here at the front, the fire department is, is not gated, but the gate, there is a gate right there that, that keeps people away from anything in the backside, the fuel, the incinerator, y'all's public works, everything, right?
That's correct.
Right.
There's a small parking lot, I should have added this, that the parking that you can see on the, what we'll call the public side of the gate, um, the town manager's got visions of, of a small playground or something there on the left that's fire department-themed, something good for the public, to be able to park there.
For the firemen or for the?
Well, maybe. I mean, they, never mind, I'm on the mic. I won't joke.
Yeah, we better take that off the record. Yeah. Okay.
Kids like fire engines, though, in what better way than to?
I think it's a good idea. Sweet. And so, again, tell me your schedule for this? Do you have an end date that you're shooting for?
Yeah, the, if you listen to the architect, he'll tell you October of next year. The realist in me says probably December of next year, of '24, that will be.
Completed.
Occupying.
Everything.
Yep.
Yeah.
I've told the public works department, we will probably shut down for a month to move every nut and bolt and, and tool. The other departments, I can't speak for their schedules, but my guys are antsy to get in this building, so.
Yeah. So what kind of, what do you think the traffic's going to be over there now with y'all? I mean, I don't know how much y'all come and go, but, you know, Lebanon Road's a fairly busy road now.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I had a question a couple of months ago from somebody from the public that sent a question about asking to see the TIA for this.
Right.
And I, I had a brief panic, saying, oh, my gosh, are we supposed to do this? I, I stretched it, trying to get the numbers of what this site could generate, and we're talking, I, I don't have those numbers in front of me, but our threshold right now is 2,000 trips a day, or is it 100 or 200 per hour?
200 on the peak and 2,000 daily.
Which, uh, don't quote me on this, but it, I was somewhere between 100 and 200 for the day. And that was accounting for, using the average number of calls we currently get for fire.
All right, so, so let's back up. I saw some questions back there. So you're talking about the threshold for a TIA?
Correct.
Yeah, so, but you're nowhere near that. You're a tenth of that, or something like that, right?
Approximately, yes.
Yeah.
The, uh, the turn lane was not required by DOT. We put that in because we want our vehicles to be able to get safely off of the road without getting rear-ended. Um, the public works trucks are probably some of the worst offenders when it comes to speed of being able to get out of the right of way. They're big and heavy, so that lane, we, we were sold on that from the get-go.
All right.
But to answer your question, the heaviest hours are going to be when my guys go out in the morning, and when they come back for lunch, and go back out in the, in the afternoon.
So the, this roadwork, is DOT approved this?
Yes.
Okay. All right. I think that's all I have.